Good afternoon. At this time, I'd like to call our Suffolk City Council work session to order. Please be advised that Councilman Fawcett will not be in attendance this evening and has been excused. Our topic for discussion this afternoon will be a presentation of the preliminary presentation of fiscal year 2534 Capital Improvements Program and Plan. Mr. Manager?
Yes, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. The following presentation will provide City Council an overview of the proposed FY 2025 through 2034 Capital Improvements Program and Plan. The plan continues or completes various ongoing project initiatives. The Planning Commission took action at their January 16 meeting, recommending to forward the proposed Capital Improvements Program to City Council for your consideration. At this time, I will invite the interim Budget Director, Charles Meeks, to the podium, who will present the plan and the specific projects and our next steps.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. Today, I'll be providing you with a overview of the proposed fiscal year 2025-2034 Capital Improvements Program and Plan. Focus of today's presentation will be primarily on the first five years. Also with me today are department directors and staff from various departments on hand to answer questions about project details at the end of the presentation. Before I get started, I'd like to thank the budget staff for their diligence in coordinating the process, putting together this comprehensive and voluminous document, as well as the City Managers, CIP Development Committee, city departments, and Suffolk Public Schools for their input and assistance. CIP overview. This slide will look very familiar to you. It's just a reminder, the plan is to address the city's infrastructure needs over the next 10 years with a primary focus on the first five years. It's a plan, it's not a budget, but we do use it as a financial planning tool to plan for our annual operating and capital budget needs into the future. It's updated annually, and the first year is included in the city manager's proposed operating budget for your consideration in April. The CIP process, this slide, you know, to provide you with an overview of when it starts and where it goes from there. The main takeaway here is that there are multiple points of review in the process. Projects are vetted and considered at various levels. We go through the city manager's Development Committee, CIP Subcommittee in November. It goes through the Planning Commission, and then on to this body in February. We have public comment opportunities at the public hearing, but also year-round through our budget and CIP comment email portal. The proposed CIP for the first five years totals $383 million across all funds. And our priorities going into the development of this year's CIP was to keep ongoing projects moving forward, to prioritize projects that leverage state and federal funds. And then we also wanted to evaluate our bond capacity and take a look at our cash reserves and see what we could do in terms of supplementing projects with funding that has built up over the last few years. Again, at $383 million over the first five years, that's about a million more than in the current CIP. Public Utilities Fund projects total $75.5 million. Fleet Fund at $4.2. Stormwater $16.9. Transit Fund $2.7, and general government projects at $283.6 million. Looking at revenue sources in support of those project expenditures. Public Utilities, we have a combination of utilities cash funding and utilities revenue bonds. You'll notice in year one, $7.5 million, all cash funding for the utility projects is being proposed in the upcoming year. And again, this helps mitigate any impact on water and sewer rates. You'll see going from year two through five, we have a mix of revenue bonds and cash with some more significant revenue bonds out towards year five. We have some pretty significant projects coming up that we'll be taking a look at. Fleet Fund is all bond fund projects for our fleet replacement facility. The Stormwater Fund, as you recall, in fiscal year '22, the stormwater fee was raised from $6 to $7.50 a month to allow us to begin bond funding some stormwater projects. And so this is a continuation using that rate structure, and we bond funding, are proposing to bond fund anywhere from $1.3 to $5 million a year in stormwater revenue bonds and $1 million in stormwater cash each year. Transit Fund, $2.7 million. This is all federal, state and federal funds for those projects. General Government Fund, what you'll see here, for the $283.6 million, you'll see that the GO bonds, we've increased from $30 million to, on average, around $35 million over the first five years, which also includes a literary loan for the JFK Middle School. We took a look at our cash reserves, our revenue trajectory of the city, growth of the city, in consultation with the city's financial advisors with Davenport and Company. Took a hard look at this, and we feel good about a modest increase in our bond issuance from $30 to $35 million on average, so that we can address escalating construction prices and new project needs throughout the growing city. In addition to that, you'll see $60.9 million in cash funding for those projects, which consists of about $38 million in general fund recurring cash, which is built into the budget each year. As the operating budget grows, we're required by financial policy to increase the cash for capital projects. That's anywhere from $6.5, ramping up to about $8 million a year to meet our financial policy. And then, in addition to that, bringing in almost $23 million from the Capital Reserve Fund. You'll recall, a few years ago, council established the waterfall fund balance policies. Year-end surplus cash, part of that flows into this Capital Reserve Fund. We're proposing to use about $23 million of that for city projects. Looking at the five-year CIP expenditures, 31% are for public school projects, 30% for transportation, 14 for public safety, 11% public buildings, 9% for parks and recreation, and 5% for village neighborhoods and downtown projects. Taking a look, a little bit different view of that, just focusing on the local funding, which would be our bonds and our cash funding. School project funding for that goes up to 38%. Transportation decreases to 18%, and that's because transportation projects have a good amount of state and federal funds tied to them. So that's a good news story. Public Safety is primarily local funding at 17%, public buildings 13%, parks and recreation does have some state and federal funds at 8%, and Village Neighborhoods and Downtown is primarily local money at 6%. Looking at the revenue sources for the five years, general government projects, bond funds comprise about 60% of those dollars. The Capital Reserve and general fund dollars, about 22%, and state, federal, and other funding is 18%. Okay, getting into our service areas and project details, starting with Parks and Recreation. We have our Parks and Recreation Capital Maintenance Project, $3.4 million over the five years, a little over $600,000 a year. The first year, we've got about $50,000 additional funding built in for parking lot improvements at Pewsville Park. Lone Star Lakes Park, in year two, $3.7 million for road improvements at Lone Star Lakes. Getting started with design in year five of the Welcome Center and the bulk of construction in the out-years for Lone Star Lakes. Trail enhancements is $50,000 every other year, and this is for improvements to existing trails and expansion of the trails in our regional and local parks. The Seaboard Coastline Trail, $5.6 million, of which 5.2 in the first year is grant funding and then local matching funds in year two. And this is to bring the trail from Driver area down to Nansman River High School, as well as to extend the trail from Suburban Drive to Moore Avenue. We have additional trail segments in the out-years. The Driver Complex, $1.2 million in year two, is to create ballfields at the old Driver Transmittal Site. Sleepy Hole Park renovation, $686,000 in the third year for development of a dog park at Sleepy Hole to complement the one downtown, in the downtown area. And then $300,000 in year five for an adventure playground area and basketball court. East Suffolk Athletic Field, $600,000 in year two, with the school's maintenance facility moving out of its Sixth Street location. There's an opportunity to demolish that structure and create a multipurpose field for the community in that area. Water access, Nansman River, $3 million, and this is to develop the Brady's Marina Site with boat ramp, access to the Nansman River, some fishing pier, and other amenities as well. We have some previous funding that was used for site acquisition and some of the preplanning activities. Aquatic Facility, getting started in year five with the design, but bulk of the construction money is in the out-years. Similarly, with the Downtown Recreation Center, $170,000 in year three, and that is to conduct a feasibility study and begin design in year five. Great Dismal Swamp Park, development of a park near the entrance of the Great Dismal Swamp, $923,000. We're expecting about $700,000 in grant funding as anticipated for that project. Holly Lawn Cemetery improvements, $234,800. This is a continuation of the drainage improvements at the stormwater drainage at the site, as well as extending the roadway so that we can open up the last area of that cemetery. Lake Mead Park improvements, in year one, there's $600,000. This is for replacement of the kids' own playground, and then in year four, almost $1.1 million for development of a building for park staff who's currently operating out of a trailer at the park there at Lake Mead. JFK Field Lighting in year three, this is to put in field lighting at the new JFK Elementary School that will be used for parks and recreation activities after school hours. Bennetts Creek Recreation Center Gymnasium is an out-year project, and this is to add a gymnasium on to the Bennetts Creek Recreation Center. Cedar Hill Slope Stabilization, funding was received in the current year and some previous years for this project. With construction cost escalations, we're going to need another $175,000 to stabilize the slope at Cedar Hill Cemetery. Gateway Beautification at $75,000 a year is to improve and beautify the gateways into the downtown corridor area. Hobson Park is a new project to create a small community park in the Hobson community, anticipating about $100,000 in grant funds to assist with that. The Holy Neck Recreation Center/park, we have in the out-years to potentially develop a recreation center or park, or some combination of there, in the Holy Neck Borough. Jericho Park, similar to Hobson, is a small park in the Jericho Community, $455,000. We're anticipating some grant funding for that project as well. And then lastly, the River Walk Trail in the out-years, and this is to create a connection and trail along the Nansman River north of Constance North Park, which is being developed. Moving on to public buildings and facilities, looking at airport projects, the Terminal Kitchen and Dining Area renovation is in need of an expansion due to the demand at the airport. It's $200,000 in the first year. There's also demand for teahanger space, there's waiting list at the airport, and so we have project in here over the first two years at $1.4 million. 80% of the site work for that, we're anticipating to be funded with state dollars. And then lastly, the airport master plan update periodically has to be updated to comply with Federal Aviation Administration requirements, and $350,000 in year two. We're anticipating 98% of that to be funded with state and federal funds. Moving on to city buildings, our public building capital maintenance, we have over 40 city buildings that capital programs maintains. We have $7.3 million over the first five years. The first year, we have an additional $250,000 or so built in for air conditioner replacements at North Suffolk Library. We have in years two, three, and four, some security enhancements to the card readers and access control. The Godwin Courts Building improvements has been an ongoing project. With the Court Building being over 20 years old now, there's a need for continued updates to the finishes and interior space layout, so we have an additional $2.5 million for that project. The Human Resources Building renovation, School Administration Office, $15 million across year three and four, and this will be to move the School Administration Office from downtown to building a city-owned across the street and get them out of leased space. Access Road Joint Operations Training Complex, Carolina Road, $1.5 million was included in the current year capital budget for that project. The cost of that project has escalated. In addition to that, the type of materials needed in order for the large fire trucks and some stormwater retention needs out at that facility require that we add another $1.6 million to complete that project. The Municipal Complex Ravine Stabilization goes head and hand with the HR Building renovation for schools across the street. We have the steep ravine with some erosion issues, and that's to stabilize the ravine and secure that parking area across the street from erosion. And then lastly, North Street Parking Improvement is $300,000 in year one. Adjacent to municipal building here is a city lot that's used by employees that's in need of some lighting and safety upgrades, as well as resurfacing and improved traffic flow in that parking lot. Moving on to public safety, we have a number of fire apparatus that are approaching their end of their useful life. The strategy here is, in the first year, fire apparatus replacements is to replace a fire engine, and then years two through five is to replace multiple fire apparatuses, which may consist of, you know, standard fire engine, it could be a fire tanker truck, it could be aerial platform truck or aerial ladder truck, but we want to try and fund multiple apparatus replacements in years two through five. Ambulance replacements, we have a strategy to replace two ambulances a year in years one through five. Ambulance for new stations, this is tied to the Station 4 replacement. This would be adding a medic unit to that station with 12 new staff, and so ambulance for that facility is around $610,000. The Joint Public Safety Training Center, fire component of that classroom and training space is in the out-years. The Nansman and Willroy Road Station, Carolina Road Station, Pruden Boulevard, Route 460 Station, and Holland Road Fire Station. These are all newly proposed stations or in the out-years, as well as the breathing air system replacement, and that is on a schedule. The self-contained breathing apparatus have to be replaced every 10 years, so the firefighters have safe and breathable air, and that comes due in year four at $2.2 million. Station 9 upgrades, as you recall, the city took over the volunteer station in Chucka Tuck a few years ago. $1.4 million is proposed to upgrade that facility, modernize it for use by career city staff. The Station 4 replacement at Lake Kilby off Pitch Kettle, $8 million to replace that fire station, along with some existing funds that were previously appropriated over a three-year period. Station 10, Bennett's Pasture renovations, $2.5 million in year five, similar to the Station 9 upgrades, is just modernizing that facility. Under Police Department, the Joint Public Safety Training Center, police component of that, firearms range and classroom and training space is in the out-years. Police Training Center at Whaleyville, which is currently being utilized for simulation training, $750,000. The building that it's currently in is in need of some upgrades, roof repairs, and there's a need for outdoor fencing to provide for area for canine training. So we have that in year one. And then Backup 911 Center, we have in the out-years in the plan. Public Schools. Schools, major replacements and systems replacements, which can range anywhere from HVAC, roof repairs, hazardous materials removal, $5 million in year four and five, and then ramping up in the out-years, you will see that going up to around $7 million a year. JFK Middle School replacement, $25 million in year one, and that is to provide the balance of funding needed to completely fund the JFK Middle School replacement. Of note there is that we have applied for a literary loan from the Virginia Department of Education last year. We've been notified that we've been awarded that literary loan, and has very favorable terms and conditions, and so we'll be coming back to you at some point to accept and appropriate those funds early next year. The Northern Shores Elementary Edition Project, $1.2 million was approved this year to get started, and now we have another $14.9 roughly to complete design and construction of the two-story expansion to alleviate overcrowding and to remove trailers at the Northern Shores Elementary School. The College and Career Academy at Pruden, we have $2.6 million programmed in year three to update and modernize the Career Academy at Pruden. Elephants Fork Elementary School replacement, this is actually about a $54 million project, $35.7 is shown here over the first, over years four and five. We've included an additional $2 million in addition to what the schools had submitted in their CIP request, and that is for site acquisition, because we don't believe that the facility can go back on the same site that it's on now. So there'll be some land acquisition that's necessary. Kilby Shores Elementary School replacement, Forest Glen, Nansman Parkway, Nansman River High School addition, John Yates Middle School replacement, and the school's operations facility second phase, we have all of those projects in the out-years. Moving on to village and neighborhood projects. Village and neighborhood improvements is a continuation of closed drainage and street improvements in the Lloyd Place and Rosemont neighborhoods, as well as some future funding for other projects that become available, or other opportunities. Open Space Improvements, $250,000 a year, and this is to provide funding to acquire land that becomes available to build small neighborhood parks, have green space, and other public improvements that are needed throughout the city. Downtown Implementation Plan Initiatives, continuing the implementation of our downtown plan, $6 million first year, we have 2.6, and that would include funding for Saratoga East Parking Improvements downtown, some funding for the Phoenix Bank Block needs, wayfinding, gateway improvements, and some reuse studies for the Pilot and SunTrust Transportation, we have a number of transportation projects that are ongoing or programmed in the future. The good news here is that of the roughly $86 million in projects, about half of that funding we're anticipating to come from state and federal sources, so leveraging our local funds to bring in funding from outside sources. The first project, Holland Road, is additional $3.1 million is needed to complete that project. That is local funding. The Godwin Boulevard improvements, we received $8.6 million. The Godwin Boulevard improvements, we received $8.6 million this year from the state. We need $2.5 million, which we're showing in years two and three as matching funds from the city. The Route 17 road widening project, again, nine point, almost $9.8 million received this year in state funds, $3 million in local dollars needed to match that in year three. The Shoulders Hill Phase Two and Phase Three, road improvements is a combination of state and bond funds staggered over years two through five. Kings Fork Road improvements, Nansman Parkway improvements, Bridge Road widening, and Route 58 Gateway Road, we have placeholders for those projects in the out years. Looking at our intersection improvements, the diverging Diamond Interchange at Godwin, the city received $12.9 million in state funding this year. $3.5 million is needed in matching funds in years, over years two and three. The East Constance Road, Willroy Road intersection is a combination of state and local funds in years four, years three and four. The Willroy Road Progress Intersection, similar to that, state and local funding over years three and four. The Shoulders Hill-Puseville Intersection improvements, $980,000, and we're anticipating 100% of that to be federally funded. The Nansman Parkway-Bennett's pasture intersection, this project is in need of an additional I'll note on your council agenda tonight, we're asking that you appropriate some additional state funds that have been approved by VDOT for this project and to provide the match from the Capital Reserve Fund, but that's on your agenda tonight. What's programmed for the C I P is an additional $555,000. The Shoulders Hill Road, Route 17 intersection project, we're anticipating another $7.4 million in federal funding to round out that project. Channel dredging and waterway navigation improvements, $600,000 in year one for Bennett's Creek, and then $1.2 million in year four, you know, targeting the Bennett's Creek Channel as well as that Brady's Channel as well. Kimberly Bridge reconstruction is a placeholder for an out-year project to leverage funding that might potentially come available. Rail crossing improvements to improve driving across railroad cross-sections across the city is $495,000, and that is local money. Miscellaneous roadway improvements, $200,000 a year. This is to replace wooden curb cuts or wooden curbing as well as make sidewalk connections that are not there and other miscellaneous needs that are not eligible for state road maintenance funds. The relocation of the Zone C Public Works Headquarters, $4.8 million to finalize that project in year three. We have Route 58 improvements, Long Street Lane to the Holland Bypass, it's a combination of state and local funds over the first two years. Citywide signal system upgrades in $910,000, that's federal money in year five. We have funding of $250,000 for federal dollars that we anticipate becoming available for electric car charging stations to be provided in the city. Town Point Sidewalk, $200,000 in year one and $1.1 in year two. That's local money to create a sidewalk on Town Point Road, alleviates some safety needs. The North Suffolk Connector, $750,000 for study in year four, placeholder funding in the out years for that project. Carolina Road, similar to North Suffolk, $300,000 to get a study underway in year three and funding in the out years as it becomes available or to leverage opportunities. The Route 460 improvements is no funding in the first five years. We're showing $47 million in the out years. $1 million in city funds were approved in the current year for that project. Kings Highway Bridge, we have $8 million in year four and I believe another $8 million in the out years, and this is a placeholder funding to try and leverage state and federal dollars if they become available. Pitch Kettle Road realignment, additional $6 million in local funds is needed to complete that project. I believe that one is ready to go. Amtrak, this is $485,000, this is for a study to determine the demand and need for an Amtrak station here in Suffolk. The Bridge Road, College Drive Left Turn Lane, $10.4 million in years four and five. It's a combination of state and local funds. And then we have Suburban Drive Sidewalk, the Plumber Boulevard Extension, the Willroy Road Widening, South Key, O'Kelly Drive Turn Lane, and Route 58 I T S Sensors, the Hosea Road improvements are all placeholder projects in the out years to try and leverage state and federal funds. Citywide guardrail project, this is to replace guardrail at several areas, $665,000, this is all federal funds. And then the Ironside Drive Extension at the Point at Harborview is $700,000 to provide for a median sidewalk and right-of-way into the Point at Harborview development. We also have the Whaleyville-Liberty Springs Road improvements and Route 10 Kings Highway improvements in the out years. In addition, we'd like to propose an amendment to the proposed C I P for council's consideration by adding a new intersection and project. Suffolk bypass ramps at Pitch Kettle would be $20 million in fiscal year 2930, which is year six, and this would be state and federal funds. This is mainly to provide us with an opportunity to try and leverage money that might become available either through state and federal funds or other development opportunities. So we would need that in the plan in order to qualify for any funding that became available. Moving on to the Fleet Fund project, we've been talking about the replacement of the Fleet Facility on Kenyon Road, moving to the Carolina Road Operations Complex. The first five years, $4.1 million to get the preliminary design and design underway, and construction funding is about $10.3 million, and that's showing out in year six. Transit Fund, we have two projects, the Transit Operations Facility also at the Carolina Road Complex, almost $1.9 million, and then the College Drive Bus Pullout at $871,000 in year two. This is all funded with federal dollars. Stormwater projects, many of these are a continuation of projects that were in the current year plan. There are a few new ones to make citywide and neighborhood and community-specific drainage improvements address and alleviate nuisance flooding in these areas, using $1 million in stormwater cash a year and the rest in stormwater revenue bonds. Public Utilities. We have the Water Source Development and Water Treatment Plan Expansion, and this would consist of water source development charges, groundwater permit renewal, the Reed's Ferry Well Rehab, Crump's Mill Pond Dam and Empowerment improvements, and the surface water plant expansion, which is showing out here, getting started a little bit in, I believe, the year three with the bulk of it in year five. Water Distribution and Transmission System Expansion, we have primarily here the Southern Transmission Line on Route 10 in Moore's Farm Lane and Exeter Drive at Lake Prince and Route 460. The bulk of that construction is currently showing in the out years. And then we have Water System Upgrades, which includes waterline replacements, the County Street Elevated Tank Replacement, find and fix repairs, water meter upgrades and exceptions. And we're also proposing an amendment to the plan under Water System Upgrades. There's a project in year one and two called Mahan Day Street Improvements. We're proposing to replace that with Cedar Lake Water System Improvements to address some immediate needs in that area. Looking at the sewer side, it's about $28.2 million over the first five years. We have miscellaneous extensions at $300,000 every other year, and then we have the sewer system upgrades, which consists of the Management Operations and Maintenance Plan, find and fix repairs, flow monitoring, and various pump station upgrades. And again, we are proposing that amendment to swap out the Mahan and Day Street with Cedar Lakes Water System Improvements. The next steps in the C I P process on your agenda this evening is a motion to hold a public hearing on February 21st. On February 21st, we'd hold a public hearing, receive public comment on the plan, direct staff on any proposed or needed edits, and then adopt the plan, and then we will move it forward that first year as part of the city manager's proposed capital budget. With that, I am happy to try and answer any questions. Of course, we have staff available as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Meeks, for a very concise presentation of our upcoming capital improvement plan. With that being said, council, any questions or comments? Councilman Williams?
Yes, Mr. Meeks, thank you, and thank city staff for putting together a great C I P budget presentation. However, I got a question as it relates to, when you first started your breakdown, you had a pie chart, but I don't see it in our package. Did anybody else? I didn't see that.
It's, the pie chart is part of the presentation. It's not included in the proposed C I P booklet, but we can make that available to you.
Okay.
Yes.
Council, any other questions or comments? Councilman Johnson?
Just a question, on the Pitch Kettle ramp, say that again, the Pitch Kettle ramp that we're adding on as an amendment, $30 million or so, back in the transportation projects?
Suffolk bypass ramps at Pitch Kettle Road, $20 million.
$20 million.
In year six in state and federal funds. It's a placeholder to try and give us the ability to go after money.
Okay.
Do you have any other questions, Councilman Johnson?
That was it, and then the Mahan Day Street, say that one more time, too, for the sewer?
The sewer.
Yeah, for the Mahan Street.
So Mahan and Day Street.
How much?
Swapping that out with Cedar Lake Water System Improvements.
Councilman Johnson, if I may, Mayor, if I may.
Sure.
That is a water project, and what has occurred, we had Mahan and Day in there as a long-term plan, but utilities is experiencing some rapid deterioration happening in Cedar Lakes shores. They're putting bands on top of bands right now, so repair bands, so they're trying to get.
And it's just a plan, because these things happen all the time, right? And we're constantly changing.
Yes, yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. That's it, I'm good.
Councilman Rector?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and Mr. Meeks, thank you again for this excellent presentation. It just goes to show once again that I think our wants kind of way outstrip our ability to pay for them, but I think having increased the debt or the bonds that we're allowed to issue from 30 to 35 million over 10 years has the potential to be able to allow us to invest 50 more million in projects around the city. I just have a couple of reasonably simple questions, and a lot of the funding sources, there's a private contribution shown, and I've noticed that, you know, the figure 300,000 shows up a lot. Did Bill Gates move in, move to Suffolk?
Where you'll see $300,000, there are some nonprofit organizations that have expressed interest in contributing funds specifically for the Kids Zone Playground Project, Replacement Project, and then there are some also, some other foundations that we are looking to partner with.
Okay, and then, you know, I just, on the gateway enhancements, you know, that we dedicate seven, it's been pretty much a static figure for a while, that $75,000. At some point, I'd like to see that bumped up a little bit because, you know, obviously the gateway enhancements are a lot of people's first impressions of what they think of Suffolk when they come, come to visit us, and so I think anything we can do to make that a more positive experience would be better. And then also, you know, anything, I mean, I love the money that we spend for the parks and recreation and enhancement and whatnot. It never hurts my feelings to see that increased either. And with that, thank you very much for all the work that went into this, and I know it's not an easy process.
Thank you. Councilman Bennett?
Thank you. I just have a couple of things right now. The railroad crosses, why aren't we getting more support and funding from the railroads rather than using local funding for these crosses? Can you answer that?
I cannot, but I'll see if Robert Lewis may be able to provide some insight.
And the reason I'm asking that, you know, as many trains that come through Suffolk and whatnot and from the port, relax to me, we should be getting more support for these crosses than what we're getting.
Yes, sir, I'd like to tell you, I concur wholeheartedly with that assessment, but thus far, we certainly shake the bushes every chance we get, both on the federal and the state level and through our partners in the port. The rail company tends to be very frugal in putting money into these crossings because they said their trains ride on rails just fine and the traffic doesn't bother them. So again, we work very hard to try to have funds in there so that we can leverage those monies when they become available, and sometimes when they're not available, we have to use our own resources to keep those crosses passable.
Is there anything that this council can do to require or sort of put a little demand on them with more support?
So I believe council can always send something to the railroad company telling them your desire and wishes to have something done, but I'm not sure how much authority that may carry over the railroads.
Okay, yeah, that's a big concern with, with me at least.
Yes, sir.
With what's going on, okay. The other question, that's all on that. The other question I had on the, looking at the neighborhood and villages, what's the amount for the Phoenix Bank building?
For the Phoenix Bank?
I might have missed it, might be in there, but I.
Yeah, we have, it's on page 82, $300,000 in year one and $250,000 in year two. A total of $550,000 in the first five years. A total of $550,000 in the first five years.
Okay, all right. Well, what I'm asking and what I'm looking for is this, we've been kicking this can down the road for 20-some years, and we keep putting Band-Aids on it. I am ready to request that we go ahead and put it in this budget, or we can go ahead and fund the revitalization or renovation of that building. This is a city-owned building, and I think it's time to move forward, to go ahead and put this in this budget to complete it. So that's going to be my request, so you can, I think all of my audience sort of hear what I'm saying. Okay? So I appreciate your presentation, but that is one of my requests, and I might have a little bit more later on. Right now, that's the big one. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Councilmember Butler Barlow?
Thank you, Mayor. I just have a quick question for Parks and Rec. So I know this is kind of news, new news, but is the Glasscock property part of the master plan at this point, or is that, has it not been folded in yet, or how does that, how's that looking?
Yeah, our master plan was created in 2016, and then we updated it in 20, I believe, 2021. We'll be doing another update. We'll be asking for funding in the operating budget to update it again in the next couple of years. And when we, in that next update of our master plan, we'll definitely include that Glasscock property.
Great, thank you.
Vice Mayor Ward?
Yes, I'd like to know, when you said Pewsville Park, and how many spaces we talking about, parking spaces? Do you know?
We don't have an exact number yet. When we get the funding in July, we'll start working with an engineer and taking a look at the property that we have available to expand the parking lot into and see how many parking spots we think we can get for the money that we have available.
Okay, stay up, don't go.
Sure.
I want to ask you also about the Benice Creek Gymnasium. What year that's going to happen?
It's in one of the out years. Year six would be the funding for design, I guess. Yeah.
Okay. And I'm worried about when that happens, and me and you, I talked to you about it before, during the summertime.
Mm-hmm.
Somewhere in between Benice Creek and the other school, Cherry. How can some of them kids get to this? Do we get any type of?
Yeah, so we started offering busing, and we went out to, to two neighborhoods, Huntersville, Magnolia, and then also in the Pewsville neighborhood. We went out to both of those neighborhoods, we held signup events, but we haven't had anybody sign up for the transportation yet. We're still, we'll still take signups if people are interested in receiving bus transportation from either of those neighborhoods, but at this point, we just haven't had anybody sign up for that, the program.
Okay. Now, I'm questioning now.
Mm-hmm.
How do you, what you mean when you sign, you went out to the community? Tell me what you did.
So we had, we had a special event at Pewsville Park, and we had staff out there that were holding signups. We also reached out to the, both of the civic leagues, the Huntersville Civic League and the Pewsville Civic League, and we came out to the civic, I think we came out to both of those, their civic league meetings. We had signups available at those civic league meetings, and we've also been publicizing it at the rec center.
Okay, I'm just suggesting, in any possible way, when it's school about to be over, is any possible way that we can let the announcement and the school, let them know ahead of times what's going on?
And we may have done that, I'll have to check, but we sometimes will put flyers out through Peachjar, which is the school system's method of distributing information out to parents, and if we haven't, we'll make sure we get that out.
All right, thank you.
Okay.
Counsel, any other questions or comments? Councilman Williams?
Yes, I have a question, and I want to piggyback off what Councilman Bennett said as it relates to the Phoenix Bank building. You know, he indicated that this is one of those things that has been kicked down the road for 20 years or more, of course, way before my time, but this is one of the projects that's, that's true and dear to my heart, and I like to see it move forward as well. So I see where phase one through two, one and two, you got an environmental assessment and parcel assembly and clear Ds and all, you know. So I guess what the question is, I know you're going to have to go back and do another assessment as to what it would cost to really move this project forward. Do you have any idea or some type of timeframe at which, you know, we can get some true numbers so we'll know what we have to do to move forward with this?
Counsel, any other questions or comments? I'm sorry? What happened? Oh, Gary. Got ahead of it.
Good evening, Mayor. Vice members of council. Councilman Williams, yes. Phoenix Bank, the first phase, what we're doing initially is doing what we call stabilization work. The building has gotten to a point where it's in a state of disrepair. Some of the main fabric has to be restored and kept intact. That's what most of this initial money is for. At some point, Councilman Bennett mentioned this can's been kicked down the road, that there's been several programs, when I say programs, several concepts proposed for that building. There's been a museum project, there's been office space at one point for economic development. Those things came about. What needs to happen from this point forward beyond the stabilization is determine what use is going to happen in that building, if there's a city need for that space, or is there a public-private partnership that needs to happen there that may benefit the, the community there? So those decisions need to be made, but what we're doing initially is stabilizing the structure so we don't lose it.
Councilman Bennett?
Yeah, Gary, I think what Councilman Williams and I are looking for is what it would cost to go ahead and take care of this building, finish it, once and for all, so we won't have to every year keep coming back. And the budget time is the time we need to talk about it. So that's what we would need to find out. So when we're requesting this budget item, that we know what dollar amount we are talking about.
Understood. I think, and I think what I'm saying and what you're saying, I think we're saying the same thing. Once you determine what the use is, that's going to help us to find what that's, what that dollar amount needs to be based on what the plan is for use of that building, whether it's a public use or whether there's a public-private partnership, whether it's a mercantile use or there's some other kind of a use that that building takes on. So it's going to depend on what the use, what actually becomes of that space, what the, what the cost will be.
Okay, because I know there have been two or three presentations about museum, then economic development, one time we're going to share a part of it. So there's space, I'm sure, or use, that could be used through city, to city somewhere. If it's no more than downtown, person that taking care of downtown, be downtown where the people are, they could have an office in there. I mean, it's used, it can be used for that building rather than just sit there and say, well, we're having to use for it, so we're not going to do anything with it.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm finished, thank you.
Okay, sure.
Councilman Williams?
Gary, while you up there.
Yes, sir.
What can, how have the city advertised the possibility of having public-private use in the Phoenix building? So we'll know.
We've solicited on several occasions, and I think Kevin can add to this also, we've solicited proposals from private developers in, recently as the last year, year and a half or so. Unfortunately, we haven't gotten much response from that. We've had folks come out, take a look at it, we've had folks inquire with us, myself and Kevin and economic development about the space, but nothing ever came of it. We had, I think there was a couple of developers that Councilman Bennett knows about that came about, we talked with them, but it never really got, nobody ever took hold and presented something that they wanted to move forth with. So there was a lot of inquiries about the space, but nobody really putting anything towards it, from the private side, I mean.
From the private side?
Yes.
All right, so that brings me back to, not put you on the spot, that brings me back to my initial question. So how is it being advertised as a possible public-private venture?
So as Gary mentioned, in 2021, we put out an RFP that outlined some flexible terms. We wanted to get some brainstorming ideas, we were a flexible property owner, come, come to the bidding table, and we didn't get any responses. So what you see in your CIP proposed, in addition to our existing funding, you may recall, we gave a downtown update, we talked about Phoenix Bank, and so we're currently working with our architectural company to issue an RFP to move forward on the stabilization. So that work should, is in process, we should have a bid out in the next few months, and so you'll see some internal work going. What this dollars talk to is going external and then improving some parking lot and then looking at the rest of the block. And so, again, we can shift strategies at council's interest. However, what this will do is improve the space so we can bring in partners or folks that have ideas. It's often challenging to visualize a use in a space if it's in its, in a bad state. Additionally, if you're not the owner, who's going to make those repairs? And so what we're attempting to do is, one, stabilize and improve the facility so we don't lose it with our existing dollars, and then continue into this effort that gets it into a better marketable standpoint, is not an eyesore on the block, begins to inspire, and so more people can come in and look into it, whether it's a leasing scenario or if we shift strategies for city uses, whatever, to improve it so we can begin to get the ball rolling.
So $550,000 over basically a two-year span, would that be enough to ensure that the billing is structurally sound on the outside?
Yes.
And then I see there's no more funding down the road for this project, and I understand that you want to make sure that we stabilize it at this point. But, you know, I've talked to several people in the community, and that's one of those projects that they like to see move forward. I'm hoping that we'll put something back out on the street and advertise the possibility of private and public use. I think now that, that we're coming out of COVID and people are more open and willing to come out and spend a little more money because the economy is getting a little better, that we probably would get some interest now, more so than a couple of years ago.
Yeah, and I'll give you an example to help visualize this. So as we've seen industrial development take place in the city of Suffolk, you'll see somebody, a developer, go out and build something speculatively, and so they'll prepare the shell, and it's ready to go, which is what we're proposing, to get it to that shell condition without saying what it's going to be. And so using that private example, an operator can come in, and it could be using industrial development, a warehouse use, it could be a manufacturing use. The buildout and the needs for both of those are very different. So if you look at Phoenix Bank, if we shell it out, a user that walks in for retail or office are different. If there is a food preparation component, that's different. And so we're not necessarily trying to put a period at the end of this story here on the Phoenix Bank, but get it to a point to we can come back, either put a city program in there or work with the private industry in there. So again, the story's yet to be written on Phoenix Bank, but we need to get it to a point where someone can visualize themselves in it, come up with an idea, and we can support it, and we can't in its current state, which you well know, and we know is all, is frustrating and interested by the community.
And I definitely understand what you're saying. I definitely understand. You, the shell billing concept, and that's true, and also, you know, with some real estate and some real estate agents, they stage property. Well, of course, the outside have to be, and we need to secure the billing, I got that. It's just that we don't want, I'm speaking for myself, for myself only, I would like to see a public-private use. However, I would also love to see, I want the city to be part of that building. I don't want it just to be sold to somebody in the private sector, but we maintain ownership in it.
Yeah, you, the city council dictates the ownership on it, so any proposal or activity, the council will be heavily involved in that. And so I think what we talked about during the downtown update regarding Phoenix Bank is, let's move forward, stabilize, make those improvements, come back, engage with the council, come back, engage with the community, but have this funding in tow so we can move and not wait another budget cycle.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor Ward?
Hey, Kevin, come here for a second. I just want to ask the question, because I, are we going, is this going to be the building itself, or we going to add on?
Are you asking me or telling me? Now, it's, we'll have to figure that out. So one of the things, too, regarding that shelling and looking at the exterior, is the pad next to it. I think it lays out for a really good parking lot or a potential expansion. So I think we have to evolve our way into this.
Okay, we talking a different era, we talking about different, the building itself and certain museums, if we want to do the museum, want to be top-notch museum, that's what I'm trying to say. Add on, you want people to come in, you want people to visit, we want to make sure we got what's in there about what we want to have in there. We just don't want to smash, have a building, and we ain't got enough to, I mean, is it going to be add-on, is that something?
And this proposal and these dollars do not take into consideration an expansion?
Okay, so in other words, we got to get to work and try to get more money.
If you want to expand it, we need more money.
Right, that's what I'm saying. So that's, just don't, you know, satisfy this, put a building there, and that building's there, and we can't, you want people to come through.
This may be a bigger conversation. We may need some interaction with council and a direction if it makes more sense.
Right, that's what I'm saying. And the reason why I'm saying it, because we talking about having a park, and the park's for people to walk, walk, and we just don't want to be packed, it's just smaller, that's not what we, that's not our vision. You know, I'm saying, you know, had the people involved in it, had the people talk about, let's see what type, just don't put it there to make us happy. I want to see you want to put something there, making sure, top-notch, you know, that's what I'm saying. That's better for it, and when we do work, we do work good, and I have to agree, when the council said we want to be involved in this to the point that we're going to be telling them, no, that's not what we put downtown, we got to add on, still got to build them. I want you to, can we add on? That money's fine, but let's see what can we do.
That's right.
Thank you.
Okay. Counsel, any other questions or comments? If not, I'll close it up with a few comments. Hopefully not too many questions, but just a few comments in regards to the Phoenix Bank building. I too would like to see it move forward. I don't think we've been stagnant as far as realizing that it is, is a building that we need to retain and looking forward in the future, continue to develop. The money that's been allocated to stabilize it is really of utmost importance, because that's going to ensure that the building remains in a state where we can move forward with it down the road. We have a lot going on downtown. We've got, we're talking about a downtown advisory board, we're talking about maybe a downtown coordinator, we've got a new festival site, we got a library, we got improvements on East Washington Street along with it, as far as lighting is concerned, and a couple other improvements. And all those things hopefully will attract a private investment, and that would be optimum as if we could come up with a public-private investment. I think it's a good chance that'll happen with the money that's being spent to stabilize it, over half a million dollars. When the RFP was put out in 2021, that would have been the responsibility of whoever it is decided to invest in that building. So the stabilization part, along with, combined with the downtown initiatives we have, hopefully, when we put out another RFP, will attract some attention and a few proposals. when we put out another RFP, will attract some attention and a few proposals. In addition to that, we have to have a plan. As Kevin mentioned, there's numerous opportunities for different purposes, along with the preservation of the building and possibly, you know, retaining the historic significance and also have some type of a museum or something recognizing what we have there. But we gotta have a plan. So the first thing to do is continue doing what we're doing and hopefully attract that private investment. That would be the best. The alternative would be, we do all this and we don't attract anybody. And if that happens, it's gonna fall on the city. And that's okay, but we gotta figure out, you know, we gotta decide, what do you want in it? What do you want it to look like? How can it be repurposed for only the, also the public's use and maintaining the historical significance of building along with how it could also serve a city function if we're gonna invest money in it? So there's no question, it's coming, you're not gonna invest over half a million dollars in something, and we're gonna forget about it. The can's not going anywhere. I mean, the investment's gonna be there, but like Council, like Vice Mayor Ward said, whatever we do, we gotta make sure we do it right. So just, let's just keep that in mind. Overall, looking at the CIP, I mean, personally, I'm, overall, I'm pleased with the priorities and allocation of some resources, of the resources that we have. I think there's a couple of things to note. Number one, the idea that we are, in the next five years, we're cash-funding almost sixty-one million dollars worth of projects. It's pretty impressive. You know, the capital reserve fund that we established only several years ago, to be in the position we are right now is, I mean, it's just, it's outstanding. It presents a true picture where we are as a city financially, our fiscal policies and being conservative and putting this money into funds is allowing us to do this without raising taxes to generate that same amount of money. I mean, just this year alone, there's eighteen million dollars coming out of the general funding, capital reserve funds. That is an impressive number, and I think, I don't think we've ever come close to doing that before. The schools and public safety, thirty-eight percent of local funds is going to school, that's a big number. It's up from what it's normally been, I think. I mean, we've been around to thirds, and now it's thirty-eight percent. You put the seventeen percent worth of public safety, and then once again, we're well over fifty percent, that's fifty-five percent of the total CIP going to schools and public safety. Kinda excited about a lot that's going on in Parks and Rec, especially year two. Year two with twenty-two percent of the funding, cash funding there. In year two in particular, the water access in Nazman River, two-point-six million. Lone Star, three-point-seven million. I mean, Lone Star is a thousand-acre asset that we really haven't been able to use and to invest that other, you know, three-point-seven million in it, plus with the additional property that's gonna be coming onboard, one-point-two million at the driver complex. I know that's something that I've been advocating for, for a long time. Councilman Bennett has as well. I mean, for a city our size, I mean, it's a good thing we have SYA. And I'd like to see that, I'm very pleased to see one-point-two million going into our CIP, not first year, but year two, and then the Hobson Park with four-hundred thousand. So those are some great initiatives that our citizens should be able to take advantage of. The human resources building for School Administration Center, I mean, we're at fifteen million. That thing's kind of grown exponentially from about seven or eight million not too many years ago to fifteen million now, and I count the five-hundred thousand for the parking lot. The schools, I mean, everybody has a big chunk of money going to the schools, twenty-five million to finish up JFK year four. We got nine-point-five million allocated for Elephant's Fork. I hope sometime between now and year four, the school system will consider, will just consider a possible relocation of Elephant's Fork and/or consolidation with Kilby Shores Elementary School, which will save us a minimum of fifty to sixty million dollars. I'd also like to see Nazman River High School moved up. I mean, the addition on Nazman River High School with a little small district, redistricting off the west side of King's Fork would solve our high school capacity issue for about the next decade. I'd like to see Nazman River at least moved up to take care of that. It's one of the, that is the most overcrowded high school in the city with some serious capacity at one of the other ones. Downtown, I'm looking at downtown, and we talked about the Phoenix Bank building along with everybody else. Two million dollars in year one, one-point-eight million in year two, one million dollars in year three. Let me tell you something, we're serious about downtown. It's almost five million dollars, not to count the Virginia Pilot Building that we purchased, not to count the SunTrust Building we purchased. Take into consideration, we got a new library coming, we got a festival site coming. I don't think you're gonna recognize downtown in a few years from now. But all these are very, very good initiatives. I want to thank the staff and the planning commission for putting this together. Charles, great job in your presentation, very clear, concise, there's a lot there. And this CIP, is this proposed CIP on our website now for the public to view as well?
Yes.
It is on the website, so for those of you that are out there, if you want to take a look at the CIP, what we're proposing, take a look at it. If you have any suggestions, call your councilman, councilperson, councilmember, or call me. Either one, we'd be glad to take it into consideration. So with that being said, we do have a need for a closed session this evening. Madam Clerk, will you please read the motion for consideration?
Item number one, pursuant to Virginia Code Sections 2.2-3711A8 and A1, the consultation with legal counsel employed by a public body regarding specific legal matters requiring the legal advice of such counsel and to discussion, consideration, or interviews prospective candidates for appointment and the assignment appointment and performance of specific public officers or appointees of the city, specifically the appointments as shown in the attached list for vacancies or term expirations for the community policy and management team, the Early Childhood Development Commission, the Economic Development Authority of the City of Suffolk, the Fine Arts Commission, the Human Services Advisory Board, the Local Board of Building Code Appeals, the Sister Cities Commission, the Suffolk Redevelopment Housing Authority, the Tidewater Youth Services Commission, the Western Tidewater Community Services Board, and the Wetlands Board. Item number two, pursuant to Virginia Code Sections 2.2-3711A5 and A8, the discussion of prospective business or industry or the expansion of an existing business or industry where no previous announcement has been made of the business or industry's interests in locating or expanding its facilities in the community, in consultation with legal counsel employed by a public, excuse me, employed or retained by a public body regarding specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice by such counsel, specifically concerning an EDIP proposal regarding Project Tyler.
Counsel, a motion is being presented for consideration. Councilmember Butler Barlow?
Move to approve.
Got a motion for approval from Councilmember Butler Barlow. Councilman Williams?
Second.
Second from Councilman Williams, is there any discussion of the motion? Hearing done, council members prepare to vote. Please cast your vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
The motion is approved by a vote of seven to zero.
We stand adjourned, and we'll reconvene at 6:00 PM.